All right, call to order, the October fifteenth meeting of the North Andover Planning Board. Okay, so, we only have three members and one associate member tonight, so pretty much that all the continued public hearings are going to get, most of them were already gonna be continued, but we're gonna continue all of them because we don't have enough people to do anything on them. So, Four High Street RCG West Mill N A L L C has already requested a continuance to November fifth on the subdivision approval, so can I get a motion to approve that request for the application for definitive subdivision to continue until November fifth?
Motion made.
Can we get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Four High Street Avalon Bay Communities Inc., application for sub district A definitive master plan special permit. Can I, they agreed to request to continue that today, John's already missed a meeting, so if he were to miss another, he might be, he would be, could not vote on this when we eventually do vote on it, so that would not be ideal. So, we're gonna move to continue that, so can we get a motion to continue that until November fifth?
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. So, that's continued until November fifth, for anyone who's kind of out for that, I apologize, it was last minute that two members could not be here today, so. Zero Chickering Road Trustees of Reservation, application for site plan review special permit, they've requested continuance until November fifth.
Motion made.
Second. Second, approve, all in favor? Aye. Okay. Sixteen hundred Osgood have asked to continue all four of their, oh, three of their public hearings until November fifth. Correct, is that correct, Monica? Doesn't say on there, okay. Can you get a motion to continue those in sixteen hundred Osgood until November fifth?
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. Discussion items, Planning Board twenty twenty calendar, draft accessory dwelling bylaw, draft inclusionary zoning bylaw, I think we'll discuss those at the next meeting. I would encourage everyone to try to look at the materials on the A U Ds and the inclusionary zoning so we could have a good discussion for the next day, okay?
They've got some very good information in there, so take your time and enjoy.
Okay. Let's do the A and R, Zero Salem Street CMTF Limited Partnership. Request for an approval not required plan, the applicant proposes to create two new lots.
Hello.
Hello, good evening, Stephanie Keeper from Smolik and Vaughn for the applicant, CMTF Limited Partnership. And what we're seeking the board's endorsement for on this A and R, it's really what sometime is known as a one lot plan, so Zero Salem Road, Zero Salem Street, excuse me. It includes what is shown as parcel three and then the two small areas that are hatched, so that are identified on the plan as parcels one and parcel two, and those are identified as not buildable lots.
Which ones, can I say that again? Parcel three?
Right, so parcel three would be basically what remains of Zero Salem, and that will be eleven point one three six acres.
The large parcel on the right hand side?
Right, exactly, and so then, currently, Zero Salem includes that eleven point one acres together with the little two thousand eight hundred ninety square foot crosshatched area that's right there, that's right off of Salem Street, that's designated as parcel one, and then likewise, that triangular area, that's parcel two, so that's, that's how Zero Salem exists today, and essentially, what we're requesting the board to endorse this A and R plan so that parcel three takes out, or Zero Salem excludes those two little areas, and those are to be designated as not buildable parcels. And so the remaining eleven point one plus acres that's shown as parcel three will, will be basically the one lot that we're seeking.
Okay, and the parcel three frontage is still on Dale Street, correct?
It's actually on both.
You have Dale and someone Marblehead?
Right.
All right, so there's no issue there, there's no change in access, correct?
Correct.
All right, Monica, I know there's.
There's some concern from both building, which may be, which may be an issue later on in terms of the contiguous buildable area. Conservation Express that there may be quite a bit of wetland on, especially on parcel three. They asked to have the applicant have the site delineated by a wetland scientist just to see exactly how much of that was wetland, where the wetland is located. There's a stream that runs through the parcel, you can kind of see this dark line on the, on the right hand side, and next to that parcel, you can see some, some brown splotches which go basically north-south through the parcel, and then there's some along Dale Street. They weren't sure exactly what the contiguous buildable area would be because of the presence of, of wetlands, but they did say that there may be quite, quite a bit. Also, one of the issues was actually where the wetland was located. They, the conservation department was not sure if that affected any access to the site from, from Dale Street, what would be remaining, and so they said probably the best thing to do would be to have a wetland scientist go out, take a look, and can just confirm where the wetlands were located and how much of it was, was wetland. And from planning perspectives, there's three requirements for an A and R. You have to have frontage on a public road, which it has, you have to meet frontage requirements, what it, that it does. The question remains that without a wetland scientist going out, or someone being able to confirm where the wetlands are located, there's just a slight question as to if they actually do have vital access to any type of buildable area that remains on parcel three. So, we just wanted to have a wetland scientist go ahead and just confirm how much wetland is there and where it is located.
I mean, okay, so, wait, so, one of the issues, as I understand it, is that our bylaws require the CBA to be calculated and put on the plan, correct?
Right, and on this plan, it lists the contiguous buildable area as being greater than a certain number rather than being exactly a certain area. If a wetland scientist goes out and actually does an evaluation, they can say you have a CBA of, you know, a certain amount, rather than greater than or less than.
But, right, so our regulations require that, but the A and R state law does not require this has to access.
Correct.
This, I know, you know, this, this lot, this area, it's not like, it's like a river down there that someone couldn't drive on if we cut up this little, this, I don't, I don't think that this little spot. So, the question, the only, so, they have frontage, right?
Right.
They have the, the lot amount, the only question would be access, so if taking away these two little portions somehow takes away access.
You mean access, for example, because of wetlands?
Access because, so like a car, an emergency vehicle couldn't get up there.
Or access due to the wetlands.
Or access due to the wetlands.
Basically, you don't have, the question of vital access comes into play with wetlands because you can't create a road over, over the wetlands.
So, why, what is the point of doing this, this and this?
I don't, I don't know.
That's a good question.
Not sure it matters, but I don't know, if it can, yeah, why are we?
If the, the applicant is, is seeking to purchase this, and the seller has requested to retain those two small, so it's, it's at the seller's request, and, and if I may just briefly respond quickly to some of the points that Monica had raised, and I think as first as it was said, that under the subdivision control law, the board's authority is pretty confined, and it's set out in chapter forty-one eighty-one P, basically, if you don't find that what is shown is not a subdivision of land, then you are to forthwith endorse the plan, so it's, I recognize that your, your filing, the bylaw with respect to what's to be shown on the plan, it contains additional, but I'm not certain that that complies with the limitations under state law, but kind of more importantly, as a functional matter, this is within the R three district, the minimum lot size is twenty-five thousand square feet, that means the CBA is eighteen thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet. We have an eleven point one acre lot. The endorsement by the planning board of an A and R plan is not a determination that it's buildable parcel, and in fact, right below the block, it states, "The planning board's endorsement of the plan as not requiring approval under subdivision control law is not a determination as to conformance with the Town of North Andover zoning bylaw and in regulations." So therefore, to the extent that a building is subsequently sought to be placed on this, obviously, they would need to go back to Mr. Hutchins and the Building Department to seek a building permit, and at that point, one would be making the determination whether or not this eleven point one acres can come, can come up with eighteen thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet, the CBA requirement, if that were in question, which is really not, I think, as a practical matter, in question for a lot of this size. And then, vis a vis, the, the frontage and the access, we have well beyond the, I believe it's a one twenty-five foot linear feet required, if you take a look at the plan, there is, it, it curves around from, from Dale then onto Marble Ridge, so you have an abundance of potential frontage for this lot. So again, I don't know that that's a, in reality, a realistic sort of concern. And then just lastly, obviously, nowhere in the subdivision control law does it require that an A and R plan should require a full wetlands delineation, I think that goes far beyond. If you look at some of the case law, the Smolik case, that specifically says that matters of wetlands is beyond the purview of the planning board when it comes to an A and R.
How would you access parcel three?
I, I believe that you could access it closer to, closer to parcel two there, that, like, so, somewhat south, like, the, the area, kind of going from the curve from Salem up to Dale Street, I think you can access it there, and then similarly, up along, over towards the Marble Ridge side. I, I think both provide potential access points.
But, I guess my point right now, there is no access right now, right, it's all?
Not, well, there's a, they're shown that there's a gate, and I'm not certain if that's an access point right now, and further, this property is chapter sixty-one A land, it's agricultural land, and it's intended to continue in that use as a horse farm.
But if we have to find access, so, fine, it's got frontage, it's got lots, but you're saying that there's access, that we, so we need to find access, you're saying we shouldn't think about the wetlands, so I guess if we need to find access, tell me where that is.
Well, I don't, it's, if, I don't believe that there's any wetlands that prevent viable access, and as I suggested.
Right, forget the wetlands, but, but you have to show us that there's access to the property, so where would that be?
Well, you can create access, I mean, just because it's the frontage that you need to then, so if it's, it doesn't require that there be existing, an, an existing access point, that's not a requirement under the subdivision control law.
Vital access under, and I'll put it back up, for section eighty-one K, to eighty-one K, and I'll pass that, the, this is, what is the definition of a subdivision, and, hold on. And, so, I'm gonna highlight here. Okay. So, we're looking for frontage on a public way, or a way which, which the Kirk of the city or town certifies is maintain or use as a public way, which they have, on Dale Street and on Marblehead, be a way shown on a plan therefore approved or endorsed in accordance with the subdivision control law, which they do, and a way of existence when the subdi, I'm sorry, duh, 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 looking for the, the vital access here. So, the frontage will be, just says, why is this happening today? You know where it is.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, mhm.
All right. Oh, right, here we go, sorry about that. So, look here, where I have it highlighted, okay, so, "Which the land lies having in the opinion of the planning board sufficient width, suitable grades, and adequate construction to provide for the needs of vehicular traffic in relation to the proposed use of land abutting thereon or served thereby." That's, and for the installation of municipal services and services such land and the building erected or to be erected thereon." That's.
Correct, and that's a disjunctive, you can show it by having it on a public way, a way shown on a plan therefore approved and endorsed in accordance with subdivision control law, or C, the third part that Monica just read. I don't believe that there's any question that we're not having frontage on a public way, and in fact, there are two public ways that this law fronts.
Right, but I guess, I, so I agree with the first two, but it comes down to access, so the question is, if we don't know, let's, you're asking us to assume that wherever you would come in off the public way is not wetlands, right, then you could build a road or something, way to get in.
Well, it's not, it's just a driveway.
Where?
This is, that's all we need to build, is just a driveway, right.
But if it's wetlands, could you build a driveway there? If it's, if, if everything off of Dale Street, let's, let's say that was all wetlands, you couldn't build a driveway there, could you build a driveway there, if it was all wetlands? So, we can consider wetlands, and so there's Gates versus Planning Board of Dayton. Planning Board was correct in denying A and R endorsement because the existence of wetlands prevented practical, safe, and efficient access to the buildable portions of the proposed lots. I'm not saying that's the case here, I'm just saying I don't know, and I think that's what Monica's saying, is that if there's, if we don't have someone saying that this, that there's where the wetlands is, how do we know that there is actually access?
Or someone saying, you know, sort of the opposite, that we know for sure that there's a section bordering on these roads that is not wetlands.
Correct.
But how do we know that?
And that would where the wetland scientists would come, because they can confirm the location, they can confirm the size, and they can say, oh.
The only part we need to know is what a wetland scientist says about wetlands along the Dale and Marblehead portion of this parcel, right?
It seems that way to me, and I know, I mean, I.
For the planning perspective, yes, and then further on, if they do need a building permit, that's when, you know.
Again, that's irrelevant for the purposes of A and R.
No, I agree, so I think the CBA portion, portion is not relevant to our discussion. I think it's not a good practice to come in without the CBA designated and all of that, but I agree that that's not our purview to make the decision here, right? I, our bylaws say that, but I don't think, I don't think we can deny it just because it doesn't have the CBA listed and where the wetlands are listed, so I agree with you on that. And, and coming into tonight's hearing, that was my thought, was that's why we would approve this, but hearing what everything's been said, I'm concerned that we don't know for sure that there is actual access, I think you're probably right, there probably is, but I'm not, I'm not sure enough that I would suggest voting your favor.
I agree with you, Sam, I, I have, well, it's probably just a very small question, is there a reason that the stream cutting through parcel three is not labeled as a stream?
I mean, it's not even in the legend unless I'm reading it wrong, and, I mean, it is of some interest, it drains directly into the lake, it's not only watershed, but watershed bisected by a stream that drains directly, so it's certainly, just curious why it's not labeled. When I first glanced at it, I thought it was a path, but it's not, it's the stream going into the lake.
I, I'm not certain why the, the engineer didn't label that as a stream, but I would, I would point out though that you see on the plan that there is that wooden bridge that allows for the crossing, which indicates to me that there would be an ability, and there has been an ability to access the property either from the Dale Street or Marble Ridge, such that, that there's that necessity of that wooden bridge that somebody thought that they're coming from at one side or the other.
You mean for pedestrians?
Does that wooden bridge exist?
Yes.
I don't know if it exists.
And while there is a bridge there, I mean, what is it for, you know? There's, there's some empty questions, there may be a bridge there, it may be for pedestrians, we don't know if it's for vehicular access, which, I, I would just say, with more information, then you'd be able to make a more informed decision on if it meets the, the requirements. And again, for your purposes, you have three requirements that have to be met.
What are the, what are our timelines here, and what are your timelines here? I know you've got a sale coming up, what are, what are our timelines in terms of reviewing this, and then I want to hear what your timelines are?
So, you have twenty-one days from the, the date that the application was stamped, and so the date of that, the filing was on, hold on, let me just pull up your.
The twenty-seventh.
Was it the twenty-seventh?
It was, yes.
All right, so we have to vote on this today.
Looks like it's a farm bridge, just based on Google Maps, but, you know, or like farm equipment to transit between two fields, but, and it goes over that stream.
What can you see of the, can you see anything of the portion along Dale Street?
Yeah, that's it right there, and there is, you know, it looks like there's two fields, you know, if you just go by, I don't want to go by Google Maps, but if you look at that, it looks like there's two fields, and the two fields are surrounded by what appears to be wetlands, but that's not the right way to determine it.
And when Conservation looked at the satellite, they said, "There's a lot of brown spot on there which could potentially be wetlands," and that's why they said, have, they suggest having a wetland scientist go out and delineate the, the lot, but also, and that delineation would say where everything's located, it would just answer a lot of questions, even questions that currently aren't at the purview of the planning board, but would come up later on.
Well, I mean, I think in terms of, in terms, I mean, I think the case law supports it, in terms of access, that we actually have to find that there is the ability to have actual access to the buildable area, and if it's wetlands, then you might not have the ability to have actual access, I don't know.
So, for example, on this corner?
Yeah.
Is it because it's bisected by wetlands, I just can't tell, I mean, it might not be, but I, I just don't know.
Mr. General?
Yeah.
Can I provide a little input on the, on the public hearing? My name's Keith Mitchell, I live at one eighty-eight Salem Streets, that's a small little corner lot that abuts the property, I gave you a little bit of information. What you don't see on this map, quite frankly, is the elevation. Actually, my property is up much higher, and it slopes all the way down towards that stream, and that stream, quite frankly, is a big, main drainage point, we've talked about this in the open space meetings, and CPA has looked at this property, but it's definitely within the watershed, the non-disturbed zone extends on both sides of that, and in terms of level you're talking about, there's a lot of wetlands right in that area, which is kind of like a little brown area up there.
Yep.
But the property goes, it's a steep elevation going down to that, to that property as well, from my area up here, but down that whole area along Dale Street is down the lower end, But down that whole area along Dale Street is down the lower end, which has a lot of wetlands areas, so. To your point about whether that's a requirement or not. I'm here tonight just to, I just found out about this yesterday, so I'm just trying to get information about what the effect of this is. Because my issue is going to be, um, based on the map that I looked at, the surveyor map, it's wrong, because they came out about a year and a half ago, and they're surveying where they put the stakes and whatnot. They started at the wrong point, and I don't believe that area is an accurate description. I don't know if that really is going to affect your buildable area, because it's such a large parcel. And what I'm talking about is maybe six feet in the back of my property. But my concern was, what's the effect? Was if I had to file a quiet title action, because I'm gonna sell my house, say I sell my house in five years from now, I don't want to be stuck with, you know, having a quiet title issue that I had to go to court for. So, I want this resolved at this stage. If the effect of whatever you're approving tonight is not going to affect that, that's fine. But to the point, just to give clarification, there are wetlands down there. Depends what season it is, if we have a lot of rain, that gets pretty high as far as, it's not just a stream, it becomes almost like a river. That bridge is just for a tractor to go over. They hay the field, it's a hay field.
Yep.
They farm it, they hay it.
Where the.
I don't know what the ultimate plan is for the property. I mean, quite frankly, whatever it is, it is. I mean, people can do what they want with their land, in conformance whatever the town wants to do. I, really not, that's not my issue. My own personal issue is whether, what's the effect as far as, when I go to sell my property as far as the boundaries go, if that's binding, that somehow this, this plot plan says this is where the boundary is. I know it's wrong, because I went twenty years ago, I went to Variance to put an addition on. We went through this whole process. But I just wanted a good clarification on the question that you guys had.
Okay.
Was about the, where the wetlands is, and there's definitely the wetlands issue down the bottom.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Aaron, any thoughts? And do, do we need a majority of us to, just a majority of the three of us?
Just a majority, it doesn't have to be a majority.
When, when did Conservation apply that, that a wetland scientist would be a, a good idea? When was that proposed?
Um, they've had discussions about it last week. They've also, um, when it was, when the official plan was submitted, they reviewed it. They also reviewed it earlier when an initial plan was, was submitted as well. So, this has been a couple weeks where we.
Yeah, I, I guess, I just, I, I feel like, uh, you know, put in a difficult position, because I, I think it, it should be delineated, because you shouldn't, if, if we're approving a subdivision plan, we should know that the lot definitively ha- is there, you can build access onto a, onto the buildable portion of the lot. Even though it's not intended to be built upon, I know that. I was just curious what the timeline was, um.
No, they definitely had several, several weeks before the official submission, because an initial plan was submitted to planning, I circulated, um, to both, um, building, because I want to confirm the CBA, but also the Conservation to see if there's any wetland issues.
Can we deny and have them resubmit? I, I.
Yeah, we, we can either deny, we can, it's, it's always without prejudice, you can always resubmit something. But I know they have a sale coming up, and this is tough on that, and that's, so I know, you know, the issue was, was raised to me prior to this meeting, in turn, talking with Trish Smolak, was the CBA issue, and I agreed with him. The question was, does CBA need to be specifically delineated? But I'm, and I agree, I don't think that's part of what's required for an A and R. It's part of what our bylaws require, but I don't think it's required for an A and R. But this access, we didn't really discuss, and I hadn't really fully comprehended or thought about the access issue, and so I, I, I don't want to hold it up in the sense that I think eventually it will meet the requirements, but I'm not comfortable.
May I just make one suggestion? The, the proposed, like, little parcels one and two that are to be carved out from this, I mean, obviously parcel one has nothing to do with frontage. It's separated by two other lots from the rest of it. I think we can all agree to that.
Yeah.
And then you have the triangular area parcel two. That is, I, I think it's about maybe a hundred feet. But as we sit here today, Zero Salem is, is a lot, is an existing lot. And this is just a single lot plan, as I suggested, so we're not making additional.
But how do you get onto Zero Salem right now? Like, how do you access it right now? Right, it's a, you can't go, that's, that's what I'm trying to figure out. Like, how do you get over, how do you get onto that property?
There is not an, it's, it's.
Right now, there's a gate here, but I, I don't.
Right, but, but there's, there's not a.
So, there's no vehicle access, right?
Well, there's not, it's not developed.
No, that is right.
Right, right, and, 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 you know, as far as I understand, the, at least for the, the buyer, they are intending to use this as a horse farm, so.
Right, so they may never put something on there. I, I, I get that. So, I guess, I, but I guess my point is.
But they gotta get horses on there.
But it has to get there.
No, but, but I guess my point is that these, the portions that you're carving off are somewhat irrelevant, right? It's like, we have to determine that there's access. So, it's, it's, it is kind of funny that if you just leave it as, there may not be access right now.
Well, and, and when you're discussing about the case law, it's generally where the roadway itself is really like, like a wetlands, and it's completely impassable. Here, if there are, if there are some wetlands, first, I, I don't believe that we don't have an area where you cannot gain access. And then secondly, obviously, if, if it really were, and one seeks access, they could do something to go over the wetlands, you know, a limited bridging aspect of it. But, but I, but I don't think that that's what we're at right now.
Say that.
But having, again, a professional wetland scientist go out and say.
I mean, I don't even care if it, I mean, you can choose whoever you want to choose. Someone's got to delineate the wetlands.
I don't, I don't think that I'm hearing you suggest that someone needs to delineate all eleven acres.
No, someone needs to just tell us that there's enough space, that there's, that somewhere along this frontage, that there's, somewhere, that there's access somewhere. They can either say where the wetlands are, or to Peter's point, where the wetlands aren't.
But, but only along.
Along Dale Street.
Either Dale or Marble Ridge have the surveyor show that there's adequate sections abutting one of those roads that's not wetlands, and therefore is access.
Right.
It's not all eleven acres.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's, it's really just the.
Well, when, when Monica suggests having a wetlands delineation, that implies for the entire property.
But we've, but I think, you know, we've commented in several different ways here that for our purpose, it's just showing that there's a portion of those road frontages that are not wetlands, right?
So, yes.
Access to, but access to a, the buildable portion of a lot, which probably there's many.
Well, good point. It's not just non-wetlands along those two roads. It's non-wetlands along those two roads such that from those non-wetland points, you could get to the buildable portions, right? So, that's an important.
I, I think in that regard, actually, the, um, the case law is contrary to that.
Okay, well, I, I, I think, I think we're just actually trying to support what you're contending here, that I think you were asking, were we saying all eleven acres professional surveyor? And, and I think we were trying to be supportive that, no, for our purposes, it's less than that.
Just, just, you just have to prove to us there's access.
But, but I, I don't want to go against the case law, so I'll, I'll stop trying to support that point, okay?
We have to look at the case law. I, I have to look at the case law more closely, but I think you need to, we need more on access.
Yeah.
I think that's it. So, I, I think we agree with you on the CBA, you don't need to delineate all of that. But I don't think we have enough here to, I don't feel, I'm.
Yep.
I'm not comfortable voting that there's enough to approve that there's actually access.
Yeah, I would have to agree.
Okay, so, and can I get a motion, and come back as soon as, yes?
One more thought. It, it, this may not, it may not necessarily work here, but with parcel three, it's not currently stamped, not buildable. I don't know if that would, would help or not. But again, that still doesn't do anything with the vital access requirement, so.
And, and again, below the signature block, it confirms that the board's endorsement does not, is not construed as a representation that they're buildable lots. And that's, it's very.
Right. Okay, so, so I, can we get a motion to, um, deny the, well, deny the request for endorsement of the approval not required plan as the board finds that the applicant has not shown vital access?
If, if I could just, um, just because, again, where I'm, my client's under a time constraint, but also to, to point out to you the, the language of eighty-one P, where it says that such endorsement, and, and the, the statute uses mandatory language. Such endorsement shall not be withheld unless such plan shows a subdivision.
Right, but it, in order to be, not be a subdivision, I know it's the negative, you need to show that there's access. And I, I don't think that, without any, any showing on this of where, that there is access, that it's not through wetlands, I don't think it sufficiently shows, um, access, which would make this not a subdivision. Otherwise, it is a subdivision. So, uh, can, so can we get the, the motion? To deny the approval of the, uh, endorsement on the approval not required plan for lack of access?
Motion made.
Second.
Full favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, forty-one Sailway, uh, application for watershed special permit. Is anyone here on that? Do you expect anyone here on that?
They. Let me go see if they are. Yeah, thank you. I'm expecting them. Oh, there it is.
Forty-one Sailway?
Yes, how are you?
Stand, sit, whatever you like.
Great. Uh, my name's Jack Sullivan, I'm owner of the Sullivan Engineering Group, and, um.
Jack, can I hold on for one second? So, this is application for watershed special permit under Mass General Act number forty-eight, section nine, part five, Watershed Protection District, one ninety-five, ten point seven. Falls reconstruction of an already demolished deck within the non-disturbed zone. Project is located in the R one zoning district. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Uh, so this project, um, it involved renovations to the interior of the home. It also involved demolition of an existing deck and, and rebuild of a deck. They were extending it, uh, two feet further out towards the, the rear lot line. The builder had come in to the, to the, see the conservation agent. They had pulled some, um, as-built plans from, um, about ten years ago. It appeared the new deck would be over a hundred feet from the wetlands. No trigger was raised with a watershed special permit being needed from the planning department. Until they went to install the deck, there was a request to inspect footings, and then it came to the intention of the town, like, hey, they're doing outside work. This is when the watershed and the project got stopped. At that point, I got hired to come in. I delineated the wetland line, and when I delineated the wetland line, we found that the, um, the deck was actually with, based on the, the flags that Norse Environmental put up, that we were within the hundred feet. Uh, we filed a small project request with the Conservation Commission that they approved. And so, we're here in front of you tonight. It's, it's an, um, they haven't constructed the deck. The, the footing holes have been dug, no concrete's been poured, everything's been stopped until we have this hearing with you. I did put a condition on the deck that it would have to have crushed stone beneath it so that we promote groundwater recharge, so any water, water can move through the deck and back into the ground, which is the intent of the watershed district in general. Uh, we show erosion control barriers at the limit of work line. There's no grading changes, there's no trees to be cut. So, it's really, it's really basically a replacement of an existing deck, and they added about two feet, and how many square feet?
Fifty.
Fifty square feet of additional decking.
So, can you just point out where the, um, line goes through the decking?
Sure, the hundred-foot line?
Mm-hmm.
Can I use my pointer here? Can you see there?
Yep.
Right here.
So, just in listening to you, it sounded like it was found to be crossing along the edge, but it actually encompasses the entire deck.
Correct.
Okay.
A, a, a large portion of it encompasses, right, so.
And say, what, ninety-eight percent?
Yeah.
That's a large.
Yeah, from, well, from the as-built plan that I, I wasn't involved with, another company did back in like ten years ago.
Yeah.
That's was, that's what they looked at originally when Conservation said, okay, you're over a hundred feet away.
Fair enough.
It's just, it's that part, right? No, it's just this part, right?
Just that little part, right?
Yeah, it's really just this little part.
Okay.
No, no, this is, this is here.
My mistake, thank you for pointing that out.
I was like, wait a minute.
Thank you.
No, no.
I thought that was just the.
So, it might be, you know, fifteen percent, twenty percent.
What is, what is this?
That's, that's the silt sock that we're putting for our, our erosion control.
Okay, thank you.
This is, the, the hundred-foot buffer lines here.
Gotcha.
You see how I have two and a half feet here?
Yeah.
You know, so that's about the extension.
And where, where was the hundred-foot when, um, in the as-built?
The hundred-foot before, they showed it like a hundred and three feet from the wetlands to the edge of decking.
Okay, so.
So, my, my wetland lines moved in eight or nine feet from the old line.
Yeah.
Yeah, when Conservation looked at it initially, they said, oh, it's outside of it. But then, um, after I learned that they were doing exterior work, and we asked them to provide a plan with the delineation, that's when we saw exactly where, um, where the, where everything was.
Okay, um, so I think, anybody have any questions, comments?
Is it because the datum moved, or is it because the previous measurement was wrong?
I assume the data moved, which is why we now know that the hundred-foot is there at this point. Prior to that, there's no, you're telling, they use, it, it seems like older data was used.
Wetland line, wetland, wetland, I'll just answer that, and I'll get back. Wetland lines are good for three years.
Ah.
And, and they can, you know, it's based on soils, plant type, and it's not, they act like it's exact, like right to this point. There's sometimes a little wiggle room of some, you know, when you get right down to it. But we went out, the, the botanist we hired went out, looked at plant type, soil type. So, sometimes you can see some variation in the line. In, in the deck construction, John, what do you, is this, um, are you doing a Trex, Trek decking?
It's AZAC decking.
AZAC decking.
Okay, so it's, so there'll be an opportunity for water to.
Yes.
Drain through the, the deck itself.
The decking's spaced.
Yeah.
And is this, what are the supports made of underneath the AZAC?
They're stackable concrete piers, we're not pouring concrete, where they're prefab, where we drop into the hole.
And are support beams pressure-treated, or?
Yes.
They are. So, is there a concern being this close to the lake that the, um, material in the pressure-treated would drain towards the lake inside this zone? I mean, is there an alternative to that? You're, you're in charge of the design, I'm not, but I'm just asking. In this loc- I mean, AZAC, fine, stackable concrete, fine. Is the pressure-treated, uh, supports, uh, an issue this close to the drinking water supply? Because it's inside that hundred-foot?
Is there an alternative to pressure-treated, John?
Do you typically use pressure-treated?
Typically, you would use pressure-treated if you want it to last.
And I'm not debating that, I'm just saying, you know, we're trying to reconcile something that has changed, right? And I would have to, you know, ask you as the experts if there are alternatives, but perhaps there aren't.
And to tell you the truth, when the, um, stormwater went through, it, it did, um, John Burgazy, the town engineer, looked at that, that was not an issue that, that came up, but.
It was not an issue?
No.
Okay. Well, if no one else is concerned, I mean, I'm just raising it as a question.
No, it's a good question, I mean.
I don't have an answer.
I, I feel comfortable with Conservation sign-off on the small project. I mean, they look at those, even with small projects, look at them pretty closely. So, I, I take, put a lot of stock in our Conservation Commission.
And I do think, you know, if everything else is not pressure-treated, this is a pretty small percentage of the structure.
I mean, maybe better that it lasts longer, they don't have to take it out, put it back in.
Any thoughts on that? Is it not a concern?
I have no problem with the pressure-treated. I think you go ahead, hold up with time, and, um, I don't think.
I think Monica, you have a draft decision for it?
I don't think it's a leaching concern.
You haven't seen any of this, so why don't you take it?
Chemicals that are going to leach or anything.
Well, I know this was.
Yeah, usually we make you go through another meeting, but.
Think we need one more? Here, you're online?
No, take nine, I have a digital.
Kelly gets to vote.
Vote, I do.
Mm-hmm. Tag, you're in. No tree cutting, correct?
Correct. No tree cutting. No tree cutting, no site grading changes.
Great. Great.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing for the watershed special permit.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we need a pre-construction meeting?
I do, then, for all the...
You do?
It can be brief.
Okay. Want to make a motion to approve?
Those two. Second.
Okay, I'm just, so we're clear, that's the watershed special permit, 41 Sailway, so motion approved to 41 Sailway watershed special permit, made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you for your time, thank you.
Thank you, Monica.
All right, let's do, do we have minutes?
Yes, we have minutes from the 17th of September and from October the 1st.
You're welcome.
We saw the 1st on line.
You know, for some reason, they were not coming up on the agenda for...
Okay.
They're listed, and it's a clickable link, but then, nada.
So let's, let's...
Move that to the...
Move that to the next one, now that we have everyone here, and everyone can review the minute.
Yep.
Okay.
So, now, we have a proposed executive session, Mass General Chapter 38, Section 21A, reason number three to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, Varsity Wireless versus North End of the Planning Board, the chair finds the discussion of this topic in an open session would be detrimental to the town's litigation position, we're, if, if we go into executive session, we are not going to come back into open session, so this will be the end of the meeting, so can I get...
I'll, I'll make a motion to adjourn after our executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Get a motion to go into executive session?
Aye, Aaron Preston, vote to go in the executive session.
Second?
Do we need a motion?
Yeah, motion, motion.
Motion to go in executive session.
Second, and then roll call.
Peter Boynton, second.
Aaron Preston, vote to go into executive session.
Yes.
Peter Boynton, vote to go in executive session.
Okay, I think that's everything. Uh...
Kelly.
Yeah, vote to go into next session, sure, go.
Kelly Corby, I vote to go to executive session.
Okay.